And welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' public hearing. It's Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, 6:00 PM. And this public hearing is the Capital Improvement Plan, a six-year capital facilities finance planning. And this is part of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as Appendix G. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Zooming in is Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. And we have County Manager Romero Chavez. And we have Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell zooming in. We have Amy Davis, the Clerk of the Board, and Megan Porter, our PIO, in attendance as well. And I know we have a whole host of names, but I see Jennifer, I guess Jennifer Davis, who'll be giving a presentation shortly. So the topic, as I said, is the annual update. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider testimony on the proposed update of the Thurston County Capital Improvement Plan, also known as the CIP, which is updated annually in coordination with the budget. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed comment, or mailed comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. If you'd like to call in on the conference call, is that set up, Amy? The phone number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN is 1234. And you can join in by listening, and then when it's time for a public comment, we'll call on you in an orderly fashion. Staff, Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager, will provide information on this topic, and then we'll get right to the testimony. Those testifying will have three minutes to testify. Time may not be donated to another person. So when you're called on, I have a sign-up sheet. Please give your name when you're called on, and where you live in the county, and testify. You'll have three minutes. And Amy Davis takes the, she has the timer here, and if you're not in the room, we'll notify you when your three minutes are up. So now, the public hearing is now open. So Jennifer, would you please give your presentation?
Certainly. Good evening, Commissioners, Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager. So the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, also called the Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Facilities Plan, what really matters is that it is a six-year forward-looking financial plan that is a required part of our capital facilities element within our comprehensive plan, required under the Growth Management Act. So it is Appendix G of the Comprehensive Plan. We update it every year. It describes the capital facilities needed to be built, designed, or improved to maintain the county's adopted levels of service for our growing population. Descriptions of each planned project are provided in the CIP, and the estimates of costs needed over the coming six years are coordinated with the budget. The CIP is not a budget, however. It is a financial plan whose costs should generally align with the budget, and that's why you see it in the midst of all your budget deliberations and hearings. Each project list in the CIP has been subject to its own planning and prioritizing process conducted by the responsible county department, many of whom have sent representatives tonight. The CIP also includes capital facilities projects reported to the county by special purpose districts, including schools and fire districts. The Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of this 2021 to 2026 CIP after holding a duly noticed public hearing on October 21st of this year. The Board of County Commissioners was briefed on the CIP on July 29th and again on October 22nd of this year. After the last work session, the Board added two minor projects to the CIP for consideration at tonight's hearing. The addition of a sports courts at a trailhead of the Yamtenino Trail near Rainier, and a remodel of a room in Building Four to act as a resource room for released inmates. A CIPA determination of nonsignificance for the CIP was issued October 28th, 2020. Tonight's public hearing was advertised in the Olympian and by county press release and was posted on the county's planning website. Staff received no written public comment ahead of tonight's public hearing. That is not unusual for a CIP, although we always love to see public comment. And after tonight's hearing, I should note that action on the CIP is scheduled for you for December 18th, 2020. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, we're going to, I'm going to ask Commissioner Mensah, do you have any comments or questions to start with?
Nope, I'm good to go.
Okay. So we're going to open this up for public testimony right now, and I will start with the, all the people in the boardroom. That'd be Mr. Pettit.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is John Pettit, I live out on Rich Road in East Olympia. The Capital Improvement Program. Commissioners, this is a very significant element to put into your budget program. As you're already familiar from past experience, items can be put into the Capital Improvement Program, but unless they're put in, they cannot just be moved forward and decided that you can move forward and do things. And so when I give emphasis of that, one of my big issues that I would have has to do with, well, this courthouse needs a lot of work. And it's going to shock you to think that for the first time in maybe history, you're going to hear me say, I want you to spend more money. Because right now, here at the actual courthouse facility here, the building 123, the only significance I see is, in the plan, is a $500,000 figure, which I believe is really directed towards a planning program to plan and study, and possibly a little bit out of a major maintenance program for the county of $300,000, which would be covering potentially 22 buildings. Okay, that's nothing. The main program, which was previously identified, showed about $26 million of need up here in the Capitol, up in this facility here, the building 123. I'm going to recommend you increase the Capital Improvement Program for this upper area here to probably a minimum of probably $8 million for 2021. And also, I would emphasize, since I had given you an alternative A to move District Court over to the facilities over there where Family Court is, for a potential of being able to build an additional facility there for District Court, open up space here on this campus, and free up a huge amount of the percentage of parking that's used during particularly non-COVID times. Without spending enough money, we're not going to get anything done. And I know that you're well aware that I have suggested before, one of the primary duties of the Commissioners is to maintain the facilities. In order to maintain the facilities, you have to put the money in the budget. So therefore, I am strongly requesting that that get accomplished so that that way you can actually have that option still on the table for you. A lack of doing it means it's a choice that you're choosing not to do anything. Please change the budget a little bit, put some money in preparation for possible expenditure to help fix this facility.
Thank you. I will check Zoom.
I don't have members of the public join us via Zoom.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Good evening for those members of the public who have joined us via conference call. Who would like to provide public testimony on the proposed Capital Facilities Plan? Please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have three minutes.
Nobody. All right, thank you. Then public comment is closed, and now we move into discussion, if there's any discussion to be had. Commissioner Mensah?
You're muted.
You're muted, sir.
The action, if I understood, Jennifer, would be, will be taken on December 18th, so.
That's correct.
I don't have any questions about the capital plan. We've just gone over it all at the various times that you had indicated in your initial presentation. My only comment, I guess, about the current facility is that there's been multiple all-day work sessions trying to strategize about how to adequately, I mean, just pouring a lot of money into these three buildings and maintaining status quo doesn't get us anywhere because, well, it doesn't get us, gets us somewhere, I guess, but it certainly doesn't get us where we need to go in terms of space, a growing county, courtrooms, attorney-client meeting rooms, all the things that are completely inadequate here. So the maintenance schedule for these buildings have to be folded into a larger strategy. Unfortunately, the Commissioners haven't been able to agree or really come up with the financing to, so we're still working on all that. And pouring $8 million into these buildings right now, and we don't even know what the plan is for future needs, this doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense to me. But I think that at this point, we are where we are, and the projects that we have identified are all there, including the two newest ones that Jennifer outlined. So those are my only comments for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, did you say you have not received public comment on this email?
No, not this hearing, no.
Okay. Then I will take tonight's public comment into consideration, and we'll just wait till December 18th. So is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I move to close public hearing.
I second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to close this public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? No? All in favor, say aye? Aye? This public hearing is closed. Thank you. And now we're moving, resuming our other public hearing.
I think we have a different Zoom for this.
You have a different Zoom for that, do we?
Sorry. Logistics, thank you.
Bye.
Please join the next Zoom.
I saw your eyes light up, and I thought, oh, you got to change or not.
I have Amy to keep us straight.
Good evening, and welcome back to the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing that we began on Monday, December 7th, at 1:30 in the afternoon. It is now Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, and it's 6:15 PM. And we're leaving off, or we left off, we're moving on now to the Commissioner's Department. This is public hearing on the 2021 Budget Overview Part Two. And so I'm going to turn to Robin.
Thank you, Commissioner. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, here with you this evening to wrap up the budget hearings, to receive public comment. This evening, I'm going to, once again, go over the highlights like I did last night, a little quicker perhaps, share with you a bit of an economic outlook. Then there will be time for open comments, and then we'll wrap it up. So, make this work. Here's your overall proposed expenditures for the coming year compared to the budget for this year. You'll see that in total, operating and capital in 2021 is proposed at $371.4 million. That is a drop from $420.6 million. A portion of that is in capital, because we plan less capital projects this coming year. But the big drop is in the operating budget. And as we've discussed these last two days, and actually for several months now, the big drop is because we do not have money to spend on coronavirus response. And then here's your general fund, dropping from $119 million to $110 million. These are the revenues that support those expenditures. Once again, there's a big drop overall from $361.9 million to $324.5 million. In large part, it's the intergovernmental revenues that is dropping, and it's becoming like a broken record. It's coronavirus money that we are not receiving. There are some other sources that are going down, but overall, the big impact is the coronavirus relief funds. Looking at general fund in particular, this is the revenue for the general fund, again, dropping, again, coronavirus revenue. And we spend a lot of time talking about the general fund and the revenue in the general fund. And I just wanted to say that your general fund, the reason that we spend so much time talking about the general fund is, first, it is your most flexible source of money, and, second, your general fund makes up one-third of your operating budget. So we do spend a lot of time on it. And we talk about revenue in the general fund. I tend to focus on property tax that makes up 40% of the general fund revenue, and sales tax that makes up 18% of the general fund revenue. So we don't spend a lot of time talking about the other 300 revenue streams that come into the general fund. We do spend a lot of time on those two, because those two sources make up 58% of the revenue in the general fund. So that's why we spend so much time on those two things. Here are the highlights in this budget, and these are the same ones that I shared yesterday. I'm doing them again for anyone who might be attending tonight, who did not hear them last night. So overall, there's a 1.5% cost of living increase for all county staff. And you've begun a reduction of the road levy shift. It was reduced from $4.5 million to $4.25 million. So it may not seem like a lot, but it is a start in the downward direction. In economic vitality, there are increases to purchase land to align with the Habitat Conservation Plan. There's general fund support of the Building Development Center and code compliance. There are studies to inform future decision-making on projects in public works. And three positions are added to public works for asset management, a right-of-way agent, and to maintain parks if funding is available. There's also an increase in rates and charges for the Long Lake and Lake Lawrence lake management districts. You've invested in law and justice. Even in these uncertain times, you were able to devote additional funds for the law and justice sector in the county. So there's funding for lease, security and correctional officers for the off-site courtroom, which we need to be able to provide access to justice in the time of the pandemic. You've added funding for a Superior Court judge, subject to approval of the legislature. Since they share the cost, they get to say whether or not they will provide funding as well. There is funding for a project in the clerk's office to scan records, because we are required to preserve our documents. And there is imaging equipment for the coroner to reduce the needs of autopsies. And as we heard, this equipment will pay for itself over time and possibly become a source of revenue. There are dedicated FTEs in this budget, one to support IT in District Court, because a modern court uses technology, and to use that, we need the support for that technology to make sure it's operating. You've added four positions to pre-trial services. Two will provide pre-trial services to District Court, and two will expand diversion programs. There are three new positions in the sheriff's office, two road deputies and a school resource officer, I believe for Rochester School District. The prosecutor was able to convert temporary positions to permanent, using very creative funding of an eliminated position. So net zero cost to the county. And there are four new deputies in corrections and a social worker in public defense. In general government, there's a property control analyst for the assessor. New properties added all the time in the county that they are responsible to evaluate. So that is important. There is a position added in the auditor's office to strengthen cybersecurity. Two positions in the auditor's office will continue historical imaging of documents. There's a new criminal justice manager. There's a placeholder to be able to pay to have a measure on the ballot for a criminal justice sales tax. And just to be very clear, the Board has not decided to do that, but we've got the money in the budget. Should that become something that you want to do? And this new revenue would support criminal justice in the county. There's money to fund the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. There is a limited amount of money earmarked to respond to coronavirus needs. And as you heard earlier today, we are spending about $1 million a month in response to the coronavirus. So we are, we are very hopeful that we'll receive funding, but until we do, we have a small amount earmarked to try to continue our response. There's money in the budget to restart the replacement of our systems, our IT systems that support finance, HR, and budget. We need a replacement for the permit system in the county. So there's money for that, and there is authorization to issue bonds to pay for major IT system replacements. In the Health and Human Services sector, there are disease investigators for public health. There's funding for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, or LEED. There's a half-time family intervention health nurse, a temporary food inspector, an environmental health manager, a temporary communications coordinator. There is a placeholder for a ballot measure that would increase the tax that supports emergency services, medic one. And there are adjustments to both revenues and expenditures in emergency services to help maintain healthy fund balances. So even in a time of limited resources, the Board has been able to address some of the unmet needs in the county, but certainly not all of them, as you heard from your elected officials and department directors. This is a conservative budget. There are many challenges ahead, and the major challenge is response to the coronavirus and the uncertainty of the impact on the county of continued shutdowns and the response that's necessary until the vaccine comes. And even that comes with a price tag. And as you hear me say, every year, the costs go up faster than the revenues do. So just taking a look at some of the things that are impacting our revenue in the county. The property tax increase is limited to 1% growth. The COLA alone is 1.5%, and that's going to cost in the neighborhood, in the general fund, of almost $800,000. A 1% increase in property tax is around $400,000 in the general fund. So this 1% increase will go halfway toward paying So this one percent increase will go halfway toward paying for the COLA. The board this year approved a resolution of substantial need that allowed you to increase the property tax by the full one percent. The assessor has estimated new construction this year at seven-hundred-thirty-eight-point-five million. New construction grew year over year by thirteen percent. We think that growth will continue, but on the sales tax revenue, we're starting to see a softening of the sales tax that comes in from construction. So, you know, we think construction's gonna grow strong. And you see an item on here about the real estate market. The real estate market is continuing to be amazingly strong in residential, commercial not as robust. And we don't know where that's going to go. Employers are working from, are having employees work from home now. So, you know, is there gonna be the need for commercial real estate? And businesses are closing. So how is that gonna impact our revenue? We're not sure. Sales tax is growing strong. We'll talk more about that in a moment. The unemployment rate, I have a graph for you that shows the extreme immediate jump to sixteen percent when the initial stay-at-home orders came through in April. But it has since dropped down and is currently at five-point-seven percent. We don't know if it will stay down due to the current restrictions, but we hope that it will. Population growth in the county is at one-point-eight percent. However, the growth in the unincorporated area is only at zero-point-eight percent. Will that continue? Will people move to the rural areas since they can work from home now and they won't have a commute? We don't know. And that seems to be a theme of this year. I don't like to tell you that, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. But living with uncertainty is one of the things that we started talking about way back in April. The need to get comfortable with uncertainty, and that continues today. We had substantial federal grants. I think we pulled in around forty million dollars or more to address the coronavirus from the federal and state governments. We don't know if we're going to get additional money in twenty-twenty-one. And this is the one thing that I do know is the cost of doing business grows faster than the revenue. So here's the graph on the unemployment rate going all the way back to nineteen ninety-three. You see the steady up and down with the economic cycles. Went up quite a bit during the Great Recession. It had dropped back down to close to historic lows when the pandemic hit. And in the lockdowns, you see where it went up to about sixteen percent. It very quickly dropped back down. We're currently at five-point-seven percent. And the big question is, is it going to stay here or is it gonna head back up? These are the initial claim applications for unemployment in the county. Once again, here we are pre-pandemic. They're pretty darn low. That looks like about, you know, less than five hundred new claims a week. And then we went up to just under seven thousand claims in a week. This was the first week in April, I think. And then it stayed high. Once the businesses were allowed to open again, those initial claims came back down. They're still not down to the level that they were pre-pandemic. And they appear to be slightly higher now under the new governor's restrictions. Where do they go from here? Here's your sales tax revenue. We have the new number for the revenue received in November now. It is right up there. It's the nominal amount. It's a ten percent increase year over year. And this slide is interesting because it shows the V-shaped recession. One of the things that we talked quite a bit about was the shape of the recession. It went way down when the businesses were closed. It has come back up. And the question is, are we back to this pattern that we've been in for quite a few years now? Or is it gonna take another drop with the new restrictions in place? And I would just note here that the sales tax collections for November, we won't see those until January. So we're back to guessing what is the impact of the lockdowns. We don't know. What we do know is Thurston County seems to be in a better position than the rest of the state. And I've shared this graph with you before. This is three months, that's June, July, and August of twenty-twenty, compared to June, July, and August of last year. And in taxable retail sales overall, Thurston County is actually up by two percent. Now, this is all jurisdictions, not just the unincorporated county. But two percent, excuse me, up, where you see many of the counties, the bigger counties along the I-five corridor and down along the Columbia are actually in a negative position compared to last year. Many areas of the state are. So our county is actually doing fairly well. And when you look at only at the retail trade, the the sales tax received from retail trade, we're actually up in that time period by fifteen percent. And so not doing as good as some areas in the county, in the state, but better than many counties. And I focus on the retail trade because retail trade makes up forty-five percent of our sales tax collections. So having this data point is actually very encouraging. I don't think that the county will be in the same position as we're hearing statewide, which is why when I look in the future for the trends, normally the out-years, I use the projections from the Washington State Economic and Revenue Forecast Council. This year I did not do that because the state forecast is pretty bleak. And our revenue this year does not seem to be following the state trend. So I've projected a more optimistic revenue than we would see if we were using the projections from the state. It's not as robust as we were seeing in prior years, but it would follow a more normal economic pattern. Here's the forecast for the general fund. Again, one of the things that we've needed to do was to get comfortable with uncertainty. And since April, when we were talking about that, we've, we talked even back in April about the need to make decisions in uncertain times. And here we are. In the next few days, that's exactly what I'll be asking you to do, is make your final decisions. Even though I can't give you the answers of, you know, what we're gonna see in the coming months and the coming year. So if it plays out the way we project, this is your revenue line. This is your expenditure line in the general fund. You would be authorizing expenditures higher than revenue in part to be able to address the things that we need to respond to the pandemic and in part just to keep county government continuing as it must. Your projected ending fund balance is going to be around fifteen million dollars at the end of next year. We project ending this year at about twenty-two-point-eight million. My projection is twenty-two-point-eight. Darren Bennett, the head of our financial services, recently projected twenty-two-point-four. So it will be in that range. We're pretty confident. And this sets us up for spending in twenty-twenty-two that would bring the fund down, balance down around ten million dollars, which is where we have our cash flow needs. What is driving these, the thing that's driving revenue, and I'm gonna come back once again to the pandemic? The biggest thing that might impact the revenue projections are the shutdowns that we've just seen in November and how long those continue. The governor just extended, I believe, for three more weeks to January fourth, and we'll see where we go from there. The pandemic is also going to drive our costs. Whether or not things improve depend on people's actions. If it gets worse, that means that we're going to need more money for public health. We're also going to be depending on the vaccines. Again, those come with their own cost. And we don't know how long it will be before those become effective, so that will drive our cost. And so we know that the, the real risk is that the pandemic will get worse. With that, I would open it up to, to your questions and answer any questions that you may have. And turn it over to you to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Robin. And so we're moving into the public comment phase. And citizens have three minutes of uninterrupted time for comments and questions. And then Robin or whomever will give a brief response and offer to get, or offer to get back to the citizen if it's a very detailed or complex answer. And then the citizen has two minutes. No, we're not doing the two minutes on this one.
We only have three minutes this afternoon.
Just the three minutes, okay. So it's just the three minutes for public comment or even question, part of it. So we'll start with those that are in here in the boardroom. That's Mr. Pettit.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live in East Olympia. Just giving some reflection of how the citizens get dealt with issues. I requested a little simple information about how much maintenance money was gonna be put on building one, two, three this year. And through two days, I've got nothing. That's because I truly believe that staff has a plan. They don't wanna release things which aren't interesting to their benefit to try to present a picture. Perhaps even the commissioners that have been involved with this budget process have a plan. You gotta think about this. This has been a public hearing going on for two days. I've spent time up here. We have nearly three hundred thousand people in this county. And the residents, the taxpayers have decided it's worthless to talk to you guys. Because you're not listening. I mean, I was, just example. In the undertones of a comment one of the commissioners had made, it looks like they still wanna go with building a new courthouse. They have to be so out of touch. The taxpayers need to replace them the next time around. If that's the plan, they, they're just going down the wrong road. Now, as far as a couple of the things which I think is important is that, you know, the concept of you fail the plan, you plan to fail. When you have no intention of fixing this current facility right here, starting significantly this next year, you have made a statement that you have other plans that you're not talking about. I have to tell you, I, I'm gonna kind of close my night with part of what I've been relaying to the board, staff over the past few days, which is the entire process that the county has gone to to get this budget hearing handled. It's not about listening to the people. It's about just meeting a legal process in order to accommodate what a schedule would be. If it was about listening to the people, you would have made it more available. You would have properly had it set by the commissioners as opposed to a person in staff deciding to set it without, which is not within the law. I respect Gary Edwards for walking out because it's an illegal process that you've handled over the last two days. Now, where we go with this? I don't know, but I do have great hopes that we can turn this. I'm looking very forward to having Ms. Mahia come in here. Maybe she'll have some leadership about making decisions rather than just trying to follow the pathway that staff tells you to vote. Make some decisions, grow some. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move to Zoom.
Yes, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
You'd like to provide public testimony related to the overall budget. You only have three minutes. It will not be an opportunity for you to ask questions.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, sir. Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. Yes, I agree. This budget hearing, three hundred million dollars during a pandemic is a rather overwhelming task. And I understand people feel frustrated. And I had a question. I know Robin had said something in her opening statement that I was a little confused. Robin, I think you said something about vaccines and the upcoming proposed vaccines that might be coming available in the next several months and how that's going to affect our budget. I, I was kind of confused. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Three minutes for you to provide public comment, ma'am. There will not be a question and answer section at this point.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought there was. Okay, well, anyway, I'm concerned that the vaccine issue will affect our county in a big way. And I'm still confused on what level the county will be able to deal with that. The other issue that I was very concerned with last, last several months is the overspending of the sheriff's budget. I don't understand how we have a sheriff here in Thurston County that can overspend their budget. And then essentially, nothing really happens. If any of the other directors, any other heads of our departments here in Thurston County did that, I bet they would be on their way out the door. But I'm really concerned that we don't have a mechanism in, in our county to deal with someone who would be sawdacious to do that, to overspend their budget and then expect the Thurston County Commissioners to carve out a huge section of the budget because they made a mistake or they decided that they're more important than the rest of us and that's why they need more money in their budget. So that was my concern, those two issues. I hope that we have money for social services because of the pandemic. I hope we have money to help the homeless. And I hope we have money to protect our environment because if we can't have clean water in this county and clean air and clean land, we're not gonna have much left. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, those who have joined us via conference call this, this evening. If you'd like to provide public testimony related to the proposed two thousand twenty-one Thurston County budget, please unmute yourself. Is that your name? Where you reside in the county? You have three minutes.
No, thank you. Thank you, Robin. Commissioner Minister, do you have any questions of Robin or any comments?
No.
Nothing that wouldn't be a recap of other, I mean, we, all, everything she covered, we, the commissioners have covered extensively throughout the whole year. And because of the pandemic, we've had to cover the budget the whole year. I mean, we never stopped dealing with the budget. It took us the entire spring and early summer to decide how to rein things back. And we were criticized for that, but I am so glad that we did it because as we now approach 2021, with a million dollars a month being spent on pandemic response and the virus, I was hoping by this time the virus would be trailing down and case, and this, this, we would be looking out the back door. And that has not been the case, which is exactly why we went through all the work that we did in 2020 to try to put, as Robin kept saying, put yourself in the best position for the worst case scenario. And, and we're facing the worst case scenario, not in terms of the money in 2020, but in terms of the obligations that we have. You could believe this whole virus is a hoax, frankly, but we have legal obligations to, to, to provide public health response. So it really doesn't matter what your political position is on the virus. The county government must respond. And, and we, and the more vigorously we respond, the better chance we have of stopping this just evaporation of county tax dollars of a million dollars a month. And unless we have a promise of federal relief, and I don't know how much money the, the federal government can continue to print to do that, we could be facing a very difficult 2021. I'll just say as a, as an overview, going back to Robin's initial thing. This is my first time through building a budget. I've been told by every single office director and elected official, to the point where I believe it 100% that everybody made very restrained requests. And Robin confirmed that she was very impressed and told the board she was impressed about how restrained the needs were that were requested of the board. Even there, we only funded about a third of what was requested, of those very core essential needs. We, we were able to fund a third, and I'm frankly very concerned that we did too much. There's so much uncertainty that I'm gonna, you know, that I'm going to support the decisions we made. But we're going to have to look very carefully and tread very carefully through 2021 until this virus gets under control. So I implore folks to follow the health directives because this relates directly to our budget and our financial health. If you have no other stake in this than that, please think about that. And, you know, there's so many aspects and so many elements and motivations of why we need to do it. But since we're talking about the budget tonight, we'll focus on that. So I'll leave it right there and appreciate everybody's effort to put all this together for the citizens who Zoomed in and showed up. And I don't know how many are watching on YouTube, but I certainly don't agree that we didn't, you know, all along the way, I mean, with the pandemic, one thing the pandemic's done is increased transparency of our meetings because everything is on YouTube, every single meeting. And we had dozens and dozens and dozens of budget meetings in 2020. And they're all there for the, for folks to comment on. I read every single email that comes into my box and I respond to 90% of them, if not 100. So, thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Robin, I have just a couple of questions and then a statement and when we're done. All the budget documents that you've been showing this evening, they're all on the county website. They're, they're published, they're online?
We can certainly post them. They had not been posted. The, the slides had not, but we can.
Okay.
The budget book is out there.
I'm sorry?
The, all of the information was taken from our budget book and it is online.
Okay. And do you have any idea how many public comments we've taken on our budget?
We've received no comment in writing. So the comments that you've received on the budget are the ones that you've heard in the last two days.
Okay. And longing, longing for certain certainty is in every human mind. We want certainty. And the opposite of faith is not doubt. The opposite of faith is certainty. And there's no wise saying that some folks are so certain they're overconfident while others are full of doubt. And it's that line in between that we need to navigate. So when you suggested that we have major challenges ahead in county government, that's absolutely an understatement. Trying to put a budget together with so much uncertainty in the world with all these spitballs coming in from outside, external to the organization that impact internal functions of the government is exceedingly challenging. And you and your, your staff have just excelled in this. So thank you very much. And that wraps, oh, County Manager.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for, to the Board of County Commissioners for your leadership. It has been a trying year. It's Commissioner Minister, Commissioner Hutchins. It is not difficult. It is difficult to, when you deal with money and make priorities within. The needs are much greater than what we can afford. And I do believe the proposed budget is a balanced budget based on the conditions they would have in front of us. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to Robin and her staff. There is a tremendous, a tremendous amount of work that goes behind the scenes. There is just numbers of budget line items after budget line items. There needs review. There needs to be an oversight. There needs to be analyzed. There needs to be checked for accuracy. And, 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 and I'd just like to make the point that without you and your team, we will not be here. So thank you, thank you very much because it's a tremendous amount of work that goes behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you to a fantastic budget team. Yep, we, we are blessed with the staff that we have.
Denise, Patty, and Olivia. Yes, thank you for that, for all you do. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Robin, did you have?
I, I have one more thing I'd like to
Oh, certainly.
share. So as we look ahead, I did want to share that the budget is the very most important thing that commissioners will do. And you may think that I'm saying that because I'm your budget person, but it's not just me. I'd like to share two quotes out of the county commissioner's guide that MRSC writes. The first is, "The county will do only what commissioners authorize it to pay for. Conversely, nothing that county commissioners refuse to pay for will get done. This comprehensive document sets the limits for spending for every program and department in the organization. The only way to see the complex relationship of all the moving parts that compose the county is through the budget." It goes on to say, "Take your budget preparation job seriously for it determines what your county does or does not do for the coming year and will also influence what happens in future years." So I wanted to say to commissioners how much I appreciate that we did spend hours and hours on the budget, especially this year. And you showed up, you're present, you've listened to not only staff, but to the other elected officials and department directors on what their needs are. You've listened to the citizens who've had something to say all along the way. And for the most important thing that you do this year, you're present and thank you very much for that. So here's the rest of the process. We have budget deliberation scheduled for tomorrow at 9:00 and I think on Thursday at 9:00. Depending on how tomorrow goes, the Thursday meeting may get canceled. Tomorrow, we'll introduce two items. One you heard about already, the Superior Court item. Also for your consideration, we will have a letter from the sheriff. And we'll review the resolutions that you will be adopting at the final adoption on Friday, December 18th. Here's the, for more information, call Romero, call me. The budget's available on the website. And that's all I had for this evening.
Thank you, Robin. And it's awfully, I remember that from four years ago in my commissioner training, that this is the most important document, policy document we'll ever deal with, is the budget. So with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
What to close the public hearing?
And I second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearings on the 2021 budget. Any discussion on that motion? Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries and this budget, public hearing is closed. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.